City Council meeting on August 19th, 2024, 6:00 PM at the Council Chambers, 111 East Maple. The invocation tonight will be given by Dennis Cato from the Church of Jesus Christ of Latter-day Saints, and then please remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance. Mr. Cato, please come forward.
Our kind of most gracious heavenly father, we come at this time with expectation and with a unity of spirit and goals and desires. As we meet in regards to the City of Independence, our prayers are always for those elected individuals, as well as those that will have issues this night or things that they want to discuss. And so, we're always praying for that comfort and that peace that comes with thy spirit, that we would be able to come and express and be able to discuss and be able to understand positions even to a greater extent, that we may always look to thee for that guidance and direction and that strength that only comes with our representation and being a part of this great work. And so, our prayers are for each and every one and even those that are not in attendance, that they would be healthy and well. And so, we place ourselves before thee now, asking these things in the precious name of Jesus Christ. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Madam City Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Fears.
Here.
Councilmember Perkins.
Here.
Councilmember Stewart.
Here.
Councilmember McCandless.
Here.
Councilmember Wiley.
Here.
Councilmember Vought.
Here.
Mayor Rowland.
Here. And this will bring us to citizens' request. I'm asking for a motion to waive the rules to allow folks outside the city the opportunity to speak.
So moved.
We've got a motion. Do we have a second, please?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. That will bring us to citizens' request. Carolyn Richardson, please proceed forward, and the microphone is yours.
Good evening, City Council, and everyone else is here. I am Carolyn Richardson. I'm the owner of the property at 1301 South Nolan Road. We are here for rezoning issue on the property, and I'm here to speak on behalf of the fact that I purchased the property because it was commercial. I purchased the property because I was told I can live in the property. I've been residing at this property since 2019. I did recently put it up for sale in negotiations of selling the property is when a sign went up in my yard to rezone the property to residential, which cost me tens of thousands of dollars. So, the property did not sell. So, therefore, I'm where I'm gonna just keep the property. I've done a lot of work on it since 2019, and I ask with respect of your vote this evening, the position that I'll be put in is I won't be able to afford the homeowner's insurance because the lease that I could find is $6,000 a year. So, that is throwing me completely out of budget, and the purpose of purchasing this property was because I was able to afford it. So, that is why I'm here. One of the other issues were and have been that brought me to this point was the fencing issue. It was discussed on our last meeting that I could put up a three-foot fence and how would I feel about a three-foot fence around the front perimeter of the property. Well, Saturday, I was cutting my grass. This item looks like some kind of tool that someone took and made it look like a gun. This was found in my yard Saturday. I've already filed the police report on another piece of wood that was on my property that had duct tape wrapped all around it that also resembled a gun. A three-foot fence is not gonna do anything for me. By asking for a fence to protect the very thing that I've invested in for the last five, six years is what got me here, just because I want to protect the property. So, I ask that you be lenient and be considerate of that as well because I feel like my life is in danger. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up is Becky Haake. Becky?
Becky Haake, 10516 East 26th. I just want to thank the council for giving me the opportunity to speak tonight and giving me the opportunity to research the rental-ready homes in Independence for the rental-ready program last year, and especially thanks to the staff for all the hard work they did to make it a success. When I spoke to you last in the study session last fall, I'd only been working on it for about six weeks, and tonight I'm here to give you some results of the program for the last year. Last year, I was at... Missed a page there, sorry. The first subdivision I researched consisted of 295 homes, 101 which were rental, which is 34%, and I was told that's lower than the average in Independence for most neighborhoods. I thought it sounded kind of high, but you know, that's... They were right, I was wrong, that is below average. And I was told that there was only three active in that whole neighborhood out of the 101 on the rental-ready program. After a year, 295 homes, 88 of them are rental-ready now. I'm sorry, 88 homes are rental, 29%, so it's dropped. 43 are active on rental-ready program, three are still delinquent, four in review, 38 are still not on the list. Of these homes, most of them, the owners are either local, which I call Kansas City Metro, or Independence residents. Thirteen of the rentals were sold, and they are now owner-occupied. Two out of the three homes currently on the market in this subdivision were rentals, and we'll see who buys them. When I was here last fall, there was also a lot to talk about the large out-of-state LLCs that were buying up lots of homes. They're still out there, but I'm proud to say that the majority of them are now active on rental-ready. There are a few stray LLCs that are not, but most of them are. I was also asked towards the end of last year by a homeowners' association to look at their subdivision. It's a large one, consists of about 500 homes. Many of the landlords that were turned in are now active. Three homes have sold, two owner-occupied. They were rentals previously, and five out of the eight that are on the market were currently rental homes in the past also. I know it's a lot of numbers, but there were over 5,000 properties turned in, which was 810 different owners. I wish I could say that they all had... That was all we had in the city, but it's not. That was 12 subdivisions that went, got a house-to-house look. There was also eight apartment complexes turned in, which two are now current, and large LLC homes that are scattered throughout the entire city. This is not a quick-fix program. This is after I found an owner that I researched on my second turn-in, and the team worked wonders with this. They... I would turn in my list, they would send out a letter, they would work the protocol for the city, and they've gotten great results. It's not quick because I had one that I turned in on my second list. They just got current last month, so the staff fully stayed on him for that one. In my research, I found businesses without business license or delinquent licenses, or that the commercial landlords did not have a business license. They were also turned into the city, and there was more than 100 of those turned down. Looking back through my earliest list, I am showing that there was a 70% improvement in rental homes.
You have one minute.
That are either current, have sold to owner-occupied, or in review. This program not only benefits our neighborhoods and the city, but may be our largest permanent affordable home programs that we have done this year in years. These homes are great for single-parent families, young couples, and seniors. They can all afford them. They average $200,000 or less in their permanent homes. It makes our state or rental home safe. This program is profitable for the city, and I want to thank you for letting me participate in that, and I, you know, hope you bring it back in the future. Thanks.
Thank you very much. Alicia Breitenbach.
Good evening, Mayor and Council and Mr. Walker. I've worked behind the scenes on a lot of campaigns and also in front of the scene, and I've never seen a campaign that brings so many people together as the campaign that we have to try and stop this overlay over our properties. People are making phone calls, actually bringing our community together like I've never ever seen before. Neighbors are reaching out to one another, businesses are reaching out to one another. They're all making a ton of phone calls. It's been absolutely magnificent. The libraries have been really busy getting everybody's paperwork taken care of. I'm here to tell you that we, the people, do not want anything or anyone over our property. We really don't. People understand that if they do not protest now, they will not be able to protest in the future because the overlay will always win over the base zoning district. Private property rights are necessary to maintain a free society. Most of us see this as an outrageous war against property owners, being waged against bureaucrats and their special interest groups. We see this as a lack of respect for our properties and for our ownership of our property. We don't want an extra layer of standards placed over our property by bureaucrats that are unelected. This will let our city try to possibly put a hand into development. This red tape placed over us will surely increase the cost on all of us. Overlays, for the most part, are used for communities that protect, to protect sensitive areas like watersheds or historic neighborhoods, not a neighborhood here and a neighborhood there. This overlay comes from a very small group that has really no skin in the game, who wants to promote higher-density residential development. I look forward to seeing everybody here on the 27th to protest this overlay because honestly, I don't think Independence can afford this to happen. We have so much water that just takes over our streets like Sterling and 24 Highway, and this is where you guys want to... This is where they want to put this overlay? When we get... When we almost need to take a boat across Sterling and Truman Road, it's... We cannot afford any more houses. We don't have parking now. I mean, a few houses here and a few houses there are one thing. Let them just build how they want. Please do not let them put an overlay over all of us and harm people like her. I'm so sorry for you, I am.
Thank you. And next up is Matt Gibson.
Hi, my name is Matt Gibson. I am one of the owners of KC Disposal, here today to talk about the hauler's license. I want to thank the mayor and the council for listening to me. Just take a few moments here. I know a lot of people want to speak tonight, so just want to go into a few reasons why I think we will be great for the city. Number one, when I started KC Disposal 10 years ago, we started with one truck and a vision to make trash or bring trash into the 21st century. What I mean by that, technology, right? We use new trucks, we use some of the best technology in the game. That brings efficiencies to the streets, that puts less trucks on the streets, right? Because we can pick up more homes and be a lot more efficient, okay? So, that's number one. Number two would be, I think, business, competing with business is great for residents, right? Because that brings a lot of competition, that brings down price in some cases, and it ups service in a lot of cases, right? Because we are fighting and jockeying for your business. And so, I think that is a great thing for the city, and I think it's... I think KC Disposal can bring that to the city. Next thing I would say, besides the new trucks, besides the technology, is our customer service. So, we pride ourselves on customer service. We started, like I said, with one truck, and I think it was 60 customers, and now we have 45,000 customers. We have about 30 trucks, and most of those customers chose to use us because we're in open markets. So, they chose to use us versus the other competition, and we did that with customer service, we did that with service, we did that with technology. And we really feel like this could be a great fit for the city to have KC Disposal here. So, that's all I had to say. I appreciate the time, and you guys have a great night.
Thank you. Next up is Matthew Gary.
Good evening, Mayor and members of the council. My name is Matthew Gary, and I'm an attorney, and I've been assisting KC Disposal with their application. Mr. Gibson explained, you know, how KC Disposal can help the citizens of the city, and I just want to speak just very briefly to the regulatory scheme and to the staff report that found that recommends denial of the application on the grounds that KC Disposal's services aren't necessary. I believe that the government shouldn't be in the business of deciding whether a private business's services are necessary or not. That should be up to the citizens to determine whether the services are necessary. The regulation doesn't speak directly to truck traffic or any other legitimate purpose to help protect the public health, safety, and welfare of the city. Instead, I believe it's anti-competitive and acts as a barrier to market entry, and that we would ask that you grant the application for KC Disposal to allow them to compete in the city, which can lower costs and increase services for the citizens of Independence. So, I'd ask that you grant their application and also that you would decline to pass the additional ordinance that's on the agenda tonight that would further restrict and limit the number of waste-toll licenses in the city. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up is Wes Epperson.
Yes, I'm Wes Epperson, 3600 South Poplar, Independence, Missouri. I came to speak to reinforce, I guess, back up what Becky was talking about, the rental-ready program. I feel that it's helped us in the southwest part of Independence. It's always a good thing, you know? I'm all for, like the gentleman talked about, competition, but I'm also for a level playing field, and I think rental-ready helps do that by forcing... You shouldn't have to force, but when you do, everybody should have that rent's property, should have a business license, they should have their inspections, and their property should meet the code regulations of the City of Independence. And we all know, in our part of town, southwest Independence, we have good landlords and we have bad ones, slum lords, whatever you want to call them. A lot of them are out of town, some of them are in town, and we spend a lot of time trying to work with the city to get these property owners to follow the codes of the City of Independence. And therefore, we've been at this going on three years. We'll continue to be at the city planning meetings and the city council meetings. When we feel that people are asking for things that they don't deserve, we're gonna speak out about it. And we'll also be at the Jackson County planning meetings and land use meetings when it affects Independence. I was just at one today. And so, whatever it takes on the west side of Independence to try to protect our property, make sure everybody's playing by the rules, that's what we're gonna do. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, this brings us to our consent agenda.
Mr. Mayor, I recommend that we move to remove the... My goodness. I recommend that we approve the reports and recommendations of the city manager.
Thank you. Perfect. Are there any items to be pulled from the agenda, please?
Mr. Mayor.
Please proceed.
Can you please pull item number one and item number two from the reports and recommendations?
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Councilmember Stewart? Anyone else? Other items to be pulled in separate consideration? And did we get the motion in a second? Got that? All right, perfect. With that being said, we'll do the rest of the agenda, and then we'll come back for the two items. Councilmember Stewart. So, Madam City Clerk, please call the roll for the consent agenda, and we'll come back to item number one and number two.
Councilmember Fears.
Yes.
Councilmember Perkins.
Yes.
Councilmember Stewart.
Yes.
Councilmember McCandless.
Yes.
Councilmember Wiley.
Yes.
Councilmember Vought.
Yes.
Mayor Rowland.
Yes, and the consent agenda is approved. Seven in favor, zero opposed, with items number one and number two being pulled for separate consideration. Councilmember Stewart, please proceed on item number one.
Mr. Mayor, I'll make a motion to approve item number one.
Second.
We've got a motion and a second. Thank you very much.
So, I'm gonna be voting no on this simply because of the reason later on that we have an ordinance that will be capping the number of trash haulers in Independence, and I will be supporting that, and that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other discussion on item number one? Any further discussion on item number one? All right, Madam City Clerk, please call the roll on item number one.
Councilmember Fears.
No.
Councilmember Perkins.
No.
Councilmember Stewart.
No.
Councilmember McCandless.
No.
Councilmember Wiley.
No.
Councilmember Vought.
No.
Mayor Rowland.
No, and item number one fails. Seven opposed, zero in favor. That brings us to item number two. Councilmember Stewart, you have the floor.
I'll make a motion to approve item number two.
We've got a motion and a second to approve item number two. Councilmember Stewart, please proceed.
Mr. City Manager, so the total cost of this design is $844,000, it looks like. Is the city... I know the city has to cover part of that or maybe even all of it. Is any part of that reversible with the federal government?
Yes, so this will be an 80%, 20% cost share between the city and the federal government, so the city is responsible for the 20% matching portion, which is roughly $120,000.
And that's paid for out of the street tax, is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay, so if... So, once the design work is complete, then we would have to vote again to do the entire... To the project, is that correct?
Yes, we as staff would take the information that's gleaned from the public input process and then hand it over to the architect and design to put together construction bid documents that would go out for bid, and then a recommendation would come forward to the council for a contract, at which point would really be the final no or go-no decision by the council.
Do we have any estimation how much the total project would be?
It's about $4.2 million.
And do we have to pay 20% of that as well, or is that entirely funded?
Yes, 20% of the total project costs.
Which would be 400... I don't even know.
Yeah, around 1.5 million is a good round number for you.
Okay, okay. All right, that's all I have. Thank you.
Any further discussion on item number two? Seeing none, Madam City Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Fears.
Yes.
Councilmember Perkins.
Yes.
Councilmember Stewart.
No.
Councilmember McCandless.
Yes.
Councilmember Wiley.
Yes.
Councilmember Vought.
Yes.
Mayor Rowland.
Yes, and item number two passes. Six in favor, one opposed. That brings us to our regular agenda, and we'll start off the bat with a public hearing. Madam City Clerk, please proceed.
A public hearing for the amendment to the Unified Development Ordinance, Chapter 14 of the City... The Independence City Code relating to police facilities, full public hearing.
And I will go ahead and open this public hearing. Please proceed.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council. My name is Rick Arroyo, the Assistant Community Development Director here at the city. This code amendment was considered by Planning Commission on June 25th of this year. Planning Commission did vote in favor of this amendment. This proposed amendment, number 66, clarifies the definitions of detention facilities at government buildings compared to other correctional facilities that may be allowed in, like the industrial zone districts. This code amendment would exempt the city detention facilities from restrictions of the code, Section 14, 41501, with the 1,000-foot distance from residential schools, libraries, and museums. I have no further information to provide for this public hearing.
Thank you. This is a full public hearing. Anyone else like to speak in favor or opposition or for public purposes only, for public information only? Anyone want to speak in favor or opposition on this public hearing? Sorry, I have to do it three times. Anyone else want to speak in favor of or in opposition to or information purposes only? With that, I will close the public hearing. Madam City Clerk, please proceed with 24069.
24069, second reading and ordinance amending the Unified Development Ordinance, Chapter 14 of the City Code pertaining to police facilities, second reading.
Any discussion? Please proceed.
This is just clarification. I sometimes hear folks refer to Independence Police Department having a jail, and I just want to remind people that it is a holding facility for people to be able to come to court. We don't actually incarcerate people there. They can't serve terms there, they can't be sentenced there, so it's a short-term holding facility only. I think it was better stated in this ordinance than it had been, so I'll be supporting. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else have other further discussion on item 24069? Seeing none, Madam City Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Fears.
Yes.
Councilmember Perkins.
Yes.
Councilmember Stewart.
Yes.
Councilmember McCandless.
Yes.
Councilmember Wiley.
Yes.
Councilmember Vought.
Yes.
Mayor Rowland.
Yes, and item 24069 passes. Seven in favor, zero opposed. That brings us to a public hearing. Madam City Clerk, please proceed.
A public hearing for the amendment to the Unified Development Ordinance, Chapter 14 of the Independence City Code relating to the home-based businesses, full public hearing.
And if I can, I'll just open the public hearing, and please proceed.
Thank you again. This code amendment was also considered by Planning Commission on June 25th of this year. Planning Commission did vote in favor of this amendment. This proposed amendment, number 67, would adopt updated home-based business regulations in line with Missouri's House Bill 1662 that passed in 2022. Under that bill, cities have been prohibited from restricting things such as operating hours, requiring structural modifications, or prohibiting services by appointment, or requiring what they are considering no-impact home-based businesses from obtaining business licenses, provided that they do operate within federal, state, and local regulations. House Bill does allow the city to establish reasonable regulations for the purpose of protecting health, safety, fire, building codes, sanitation, transportation, traffic, hazardous waste, and noise, which we believe this ordinance does do. The House Bill with these proposed regulations would open up other opportunities for residents working from home and having the ability to do that business without having to obtain a license under some circumstances. I have no new information for this public hearing.
Thank you very much. This is a full public hearing, so anyone want to speak in favor of, opposition to, or for informational purposes only? Anyone want to speak in favor of, in opposition to, or for informational purposes only? Going three times, anyone want to speak in favor of, opposition to, or for informational purposes only? All right, we will close this public hearing. Madam City Clerk, please proceed.
Councilmember Fears.
Excuse me, hold. We need to read the second reading.
Oh, I'm so sorry. 24-070, second reading, an ordinance amending the Unified Development Ordinance, Chapter 14 of the City Code pertaining to home-based businesses, second reading.
Thank you. Any discussion on this item? Please proceed.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. As Mr. Arroyo pointed out, we have to make these changes because state law changed, but I've had a lot of questions in the community, and I just want to clarify a couple of things. He mentioned no-impact, so you can't start a home-based business and have a car repair business in your front yard. So, there are... So there are aspects that even though that would be a home-based business, you can't do those things. And there are things that still would require you to deal with the city for licensure. So if you are providing food or making food rather, you still have to deal with the public health consequences of that and get an inspection. If you're doing things with blowtorches, et cetera, you're gonna have to deal with the fire marshal on those things. You could set up your home-based businesses, but your neighbors can object if you have two hundred cars pulling up every day. So I just want citizens to know that you have recourse. This is really designed for the tiny operation, the insurance person who sells insurance from their home or runs a web-based service. So the city can allow them to have those businesses, but it shouldn't impact your neighbors. So I just wanted to make those sorts of clarification. I'll be voting in favor of this. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Any further discussion on item twenty-four zero seven zero? Any further discussion on twenty-four zero seven zero? Seeing no further discussion, Madam City Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Fears?
Yes.
Councilmember Perkins?
Yes.
Councilmember Stewart?
Yes.
Councilmember McCandless?
Yes.
Councilmember Wiley?
Yes.
Councilmember Vought?
Yes.
Mayor Rowland?
Yes. Twenty-four zero seven zero passes. Seven in favor, zero opposed. That brings us to our third public hearing. Madam City Clerk, please proceed.
A public hearing for the amendment to the Unified Development Ordinance, Chapter fourteen of the Independence City Code relating to small-box discount stores, tobacco stores, convenience stores, and liquor stores, full public hearing.
Thank you. This code amendment was considered by Planning Commission on July ninth of this year. Planning Commission did vote in favor of this code amendment. This proposed amendment, number sixty-eight, updates regulations pertaining to small-box discount stores, tobacco stores, and convenience stores and liquor stores. The goal here was to separate out tobacco stores and convenience stores, which is currently combined in our code. It also adds a new section for liquor stores and does create new definitions for small-box discount stores. In all of these use categories, operational standards have been included in each one of these businesses with this amendment. I have no new further information to provide on this public hearing.
Thank you. We will open this public hearing. Anyone want to speak in favor of, opposition to, or for informational purposes only? Anyone want to speak in favor of, opposition to, or for informational purposes only? Anybody want to speak in favor of, opposition to, or for informational purposes only? Seeing none, we'll go ahead and close the public hearing. Madam City Clerk, please read the ordinance.
Twenty-four dash zero seven one, second reading, an ordinance amending the Unified Development Ordinance, Chapter fourteen of the City Code pertaining to small-box discount, tobacco, convenience, and liquor stores, second reading.
Thank you. Any further discussion on this item? Please proceed.
Sorry, I didn't realize I'd have this many comments or questions. Mr. Arroyo, just making sure that I understand the intent of this ordinance. This is to make sure, and I will categorize them as dollar stores, that there are two miles distance between those, because we have had quite a proliferation of dollar stores. Special shout-out to, you know, citizen comments that we've had from people who've objected to those where there've been such a cluster. Just making sure that I understand that and the audience understands.
That is correct.
And also a separation of liquor stores?
I believe so.
Two-mile separation for liquor stores?
Density limitations, yes.
Okay, fantastic. I will enthusiastically support this. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Mr. Mayor?
Please proceed.
I would also add that one of the added benefits of approving this would be the storefrontage that cannot be plastered with different signage, cigarette signs, liquor signs. But it's for the, one, appearance and aesthetics for the outside, but more importantly, for the safety for the individuals inside. It'll just look better and look a little bit more cleaner, so another added benefit.
Very good. Anyone else have other further discussions? Please proceed.
I actually do have a question about how we notify our merchants of the change in their window capacity. Basically, you have to be able to see out of the store and into the store. They can't just be completely covered by signs.
That is correct. Yeah, there's like a clear span distance. I had to go back and look at the exact distances, but we did take a look at that to make sure for safety purposes that you're able to see inside as well as an attendant on the inside's able to see out.
And how do we notify our merchants about this change?
So when we get business license updates, we will notify the owners of those properties that are in the licensing system.
So there won't be any proactive communication? I just don't want somebody to get some kind of citation because we didn't do?
Yeah, we generally will give them a period of time or a grace period to come in and make sure that they understand what that code is before we enforce it.
Thank you very much.
Mr. Mayor?
Please proceed.
Question for Mr. Arroyo, I think would be for him. Question is, so on the store facilities themselves, I'm assuming we're grandfathering in the current locations?
Correct.
But then we're not grandfathering in any signage or the space in the windows and all that?
Correct, the items that can be changed, yes, we will enforce.
Just want to make sure on that. All right, thank you.
Anyone else have other further discussion? All right. We will close the public hearing, and Madam City Clerk, please proceed.
Twenty-four dash zero seven one, second reading, an ordinance amending the Unified Development Ordinance, Chapter fourteen of the City Code pertaining to small-box discount, tobacco, convenience, and liquor stores, second reading.
Thank you. Any further discussion on twenty-four zero seven one? Seeing none, Madam City Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Fears?
Yes.
Councilmember Perkins?
Yes.
Councilmember Stewart?
Yes.
Councilmember McCandless?
Yes.
Councilmember Wiley?
Yes.
Councilmember Vought?
Yes.
Mayor Rowland?
Yes, twenty-four zero seven one passes. Seven in favor, zero opposed. You thought we were done with public hearings, but wait, there's more.
A public hearing for the amendment to the Unified Development Ordinance, Chapter fourteen of the Independence City Code relating to recreational vehicle park use, full public hearing.
Thank you again. This code amendment was heard by Planning Commission on July ninth of this year. Planning Commission did vote in favor of this rezoning, or this code amendment, sorry. This is Amendment number sixty-nine to the Unified Development Code. It updates recreational vehicle park regulations in Section fourteen, four oh five dash zero one C of the U D O. This amendment clarifies that the approval process for recreational vehicles follow the special use permit application process, and it also does update criteria to be in compliance with the municipal services standards that were updated in Chapter twenty and the FEMA and right-of-way standards that were updated in Chapter seventeen last year. I have no new information for this hearing.
With that, I'll open the public hearing. Anyone want to speak in favor of, opposition to, or for informational purposes only? Anyone want to speak in favor of, in opposition to, or for informational purposes only? Anyone want to speak in favor of, in opposition to, or for informational purposes only? With that, I will close the public hearing. Madam City Clerk, please proceed.
Twenty-four dash zero seven two, second reading, an ordinance amending the Unified Development Ordinance, Chapter fourteen of the City Code pertaining to recreational vehicle parks, second reading.
Thank you. Anyone, any questions, comments, concerns? Seeing none, Madam City Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Fears?
Yes.
Councilmember Perkins?
Yes.
Councilmember Stewart?
Yes.
Councilmember McCandless?
Yes.
Councilmember Wiley?
Yes.
Councilmember Vought?
Yes.
Mayor Rowland?
Yes, twenty-four zero seven two passes. Seven in favor, zero opposed. That brings us to a public hearing. Madam City Clerk, please proceed.
A public hearing for the application to rezone the property at one-three-zero-one South Nolan Road from C-two General Commercial to R-six Single Family Residential, new information only.
Thank you again. So this rezoning was considered by Planning Commission on June twenty-fifth of this year. Planning Commission did vote in favor of this rezoning. This is a property at southeast corner of Nolan Road and Fair Street. It's currently Zone C-two Commercial. The applicant does wish to live at that property and use the property as a single-family home, therefore it does require an R-six zoning. This will also allow the property owner to be in compliance with current city code. I have no new information to provide.
And with that, we will close the public hearing for this is for, this public hearing was only for new information only. That brings us to the ordinance. Madam City Clerk, please proceed.
Twenty-four dash zero seven three, second reading, an ordinance approving a rezoning from District C-two General Commercial to R-six Single Family Residential for the property at one-three-zero-one South Nolan Road, second reading.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Please proceed.
I don't know if this question for Mr. City Manager or Mr. Arroyo, I'm not sure which. That being clearly a commercial district, so way it's currently zoned, she's not able to live in it, is that correct?
Mr. Arroyo may default to you to speak more to the code.
That is correct. So as a commercial property, it can't be lived in as a single-family residence, so that could be one particular issue.
But it's clearly a single-family residence. It's been that way as long as I can remember.
So back in nineteen eighty, it was zoned commercial, and so it's been used as a commercial property since then. It is true that that zoning is kind of a commercial corridor, but it has been used, the last use was a commercial business, so.
So I guess my question is, is if we rezone it to residential, does that cause us any difficulty in that commercial district from your perspective?
So, you know, I understand, you know, it doesn't make sense to make it commercial, I guess maybe a different way to look at that question. It can always be rezoned back to commercial. The staff's purpose here was to make sure that the applicant was in compliant with code. I don't know if it technically hurts that area. It is kind of a small lot, probably not the best lot size conducive for your typical type of commercial, but it can't always be rezoned back to commercial if an applicant wishes to do so.
Okay, thank you. Any other further discussions on twenty-four zero seven four? Anyone else have other further discussion? All right, Madam City Clerk, please proceed.
Councilmember Fears?
Yes.
Councilmember Perkins?
Yes.
Councilmember Stewart?
Yes.
Councilmember McCandless?
Yes.
Councilmember Wiley?
Yes.
Councilmember Vought?
Yes.
Mayor Rowland?
Yes, and twenty-four zero seven four is in fact approved. Seven in favor, zero opposed. That brings us to another public hearing. I'll open the public hearing.
A public hearing for the application to rezone the property at one-nine-three-zero-seven East Holkey Road from R-one Single Family Residential Estate to R-six Single Family Residential, new information only.
Thank you.
Thank you. So this rezoning was considered by Planning Commission on June twenty-fifth of this year. Planning Commission did vote in favor of this rezoning. This property at nineteen-three oh seven Holkey Road, it's part of a larger parcel of land that the applicant wishes to divide into two lots with a minor subdivision application so they can build a single-family home on a newly created smaller lot along Holkey. The applicant does own an existing family home that's adjacent to that lot, which is an R-one due to its size. However, in order to create that code-compliant lot along Holkey, that particular lot has to be zoned from R-one to R-six. This approval of this particular, if the council so chooses to do so, would be conditioned on the approval of the minor subdivision. And that is all I have for this.
Thank you. This will close the public hearing, because this is for information purposes only. Madam City Clerk, please proceed.
Twenty-four dash zero seven four, second reading, an ordinance approving a rezoning from District R-one Single Family Residential Estate to R-six Single Family Residential for a portion of the property at one-nine-three-zero-seven East Holkey Road, second reading.
Any further discussion? Any further discussion? Any further discussion on twenty-four zero seven four? Seeing none, Madam City Clerk, please proceed.
Councilmember Fears?
Yes.
Excuse me, Councilmember Perkins?
Yes.
Councilmember Stewart?
Yes.
Councilmember McCandless?
Yes.
Councilmember Wiley?
Yes.
Councilmember Vought?
Yes.
Mayor Rowland?
Yes, and twenty-four zero seven four passes. Seven in favor, zero opposed. That brings us to another public hearing. I'll go ahead and open the public hearing.
A public hearing for the application to rezone the property at one-five-five-zero South Nolan Road from C-two General Commercial to C-two slash P U D General Commercial slash Planned Unit Development and approve a preliminary development plan, new information only.
Thank you again. This P U D or Planned Unit Development rezoning was considered by Planning Commission on June twenty-fifth of this year. Planning Commission did vote in favor of this P U D rezoning. This is a property located at fifteen-five-zero South Nolan Road. It was previously the Dynamic Speed Building. Prior to that, it was an AutoZone. Cable Dahmer wishes to move and expand their Collision Repair Center to this site. The P U D designation is allowed in order to allow its heavier use, or what we call general automotive use, at this site. I have no new information to provide.
Thank you, and we will close the public hearing. Madam City Clerk, please proceed.
Twenty-four dash zero seven five, second reading, an ordinance approving a rezoning from District C-two General Commercial to District C-two slash P U D General Commercial, Planned Unit Development, and approving a preliminary development plan for the property located at one-five-five-zero South Nolan Road, second reading.
Thank you. Any further discussion on twenty-four zero seven five? Any further discussion on twenty-four zero seven five? Seeing none, Madam City Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Fears?
Yes.
Councilmember Perkins?
Yes.
Councilmember Stewart?
Yes.
Councilmember McCandless?
Yes.
Councilmember Wiley?
Yes.
Councilmember Vought?
Yes.
Mayor Rowland?
Yes, twenty-four zero seven five passes. Seven in favor, zero opposed. That brings us to another public hearing. Madam City Clerk, please proceed.
A public hearing for the special use permit application to operate a group home at eight-zero-one West Twenty-third Street, new information only.
Let me open the public hearing, and please proceed.
Thank you. This special use permit was considered by Planning Commission on June twenty-fifth of this year. Planning Commission did vote in favor of this special use permit. This application is to operate a transitional housing facility at eight-zero-one West Twenty-third Street. The facility will provide temporary housing between thirty to ninety days for up to thirty women in need of life skills to include spiritual growth, mentoring, job and work ethics, financial training, and credit building, as well as physical world building. This case did receive a valid protest, so a supermajority will be required in order to approve it. I have no new information to provide.
Thank you. That will close this public hearing. Madam City Clerk, please proceed.
Twenty-four dash zero seven six, second reading, an ordinance approving a special use permit to operate a group home for transitional housing at eight-zero-one West Twenty-third Street in Independence, Missouri. Valid legal protest filed, five affirmative votes required to approve, second reading.
Any discussion on twenty-four zero seven six? Please proceed.
Just a question on the valid legal protest. What is the, I didn't see any detail on that. What is the scope of that protest, or can you give us any information? Last I inquired, there wasn't any, but I wanted to see if this.
Mr. Arroyo, do you want to speak to that?
So the protest can come in, it doesn't have to be before Planning Commission, so as long as it's before city council. And it was, give me a second here. So the protest is thirty percent or more of the landowners within a hundred and eighty-five feet of the. feet of that particular area. And so we did get that petition in. And we did verify that it was on seven one of, um, twenty twenty-four.
And does it say anything about why they're protesting? I mean, when I looked, I didn't find anything on that.
They don't necessarily tell us why they are protesting. The protest petition is essentially just signed, it's actually notarized, and so we just verify that the addresses are within the appropriate amount and appropriate percentage.
Okay, okay.
Mr. Mayor, please proceed.
Thank you. Well, we'll start with, with the legal protest as Mr. Aurora said, that the percentage of the hundred and eighty-five foot was a valid with one property owner that has thirty-five percent of the overall area. So the valid legal protest was submitted. The, um, the individual did not speak before the Planning Commission. As always, um, when there's differences between an applicant and somebody who's doing a protest, the two groups get together and they talk and they try to work out the differences that they might have. It always seems to have worked out very well when, when people do that. Mr. Thorpe, who is with the Unity Center, has had a great working relationship over there, went over there and talked to the individual and worked out and discussed some of the concerns there. As a matter of note, I would say that the Independent School District was notified. We had been working with the Unity Center for about a year and a half, maybe two years now. We did meet with the Independent School District, discussed that with Dr. Hurl and Mr. Green at the time. We discussed the, the plans, the overall look at, at everything and, and the conversation went very well and there was no objection from them. This is one of the first applicants in the new revised group living facility ordinance that we passed, uh, two years ago. Two years ago. So this helped fills the need for the community and we're looking forward to seeing the growth and, and the outreach and outcome of this.
Perfect. Any other further discussion? Okay, Madam City Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Fears?
Yes.
Councilmember Perkins?
Yes.
Councilmember Stewart?
Yes.
Councilmember McCandless?
Yes.
Councilmember Wiley?
Yes.
Councilmember Vaught?
Yes.
Mayor Rowland?
Yes. And this needed a super majority to pass, but we have seven in favor, zero opposed, so twenty-four zero seven six passes, seven in favor, zero opposed. That brings us to another public hearing.
A public hearing for the application to rezone the property at one three zero zero one East US forty Highway from C one Neighborhood Commercial and C two, General Commercial to C two, General Commercial. New information only.
I'll go ahead and open up the public hearing. Please proceed.
Thank you. So this rezoning was considered by Planning Commission on July ninth of this year. Planning Commission did vote in favor of this rezoning. This is a property at thirteen zero zero one East US forty Highway. It was formerly a carpet store. Prior to that, it was the AMF Bowling Alley. The applicant here wishes to use a property to sell remanufactured metal working machinery. The location that they are actually wanting to operate out of is C two. However, there's a portion of the lot along forty Highway that's actually C one. So in order to be able to do what they need to do, they are asking for this to be rezoned, the entirety of that site to be rezoned C two. That is all the information I have for this. Thank you.
Thank you. We'll close the public hearing. Madam City Clerk, please proceed.
Twenty-four dash zero seven seven, second reading. An ordinance approving a rezoning from District C, C two, General Commercial and C one Neighborhood Commercial to C two, General Commercial for the property at one three zero zero one East US forty Highway. Second reading.
Thank you. Any discussion on twenty-four zero seven seven? Any discussion on twenty-four zero seven seven? Seeing none, Madam City Clerk, please proceed.
Councilmember Fears?
Yes.
Councilmember Perkins?
Yes.
Councilmember Stewart?
Yes.
Councilmember, uh, McCandless?
Yes.
Councilmember Wiley?
Yes.
Councilmember Vaught?
Yes.
Mayor Rowland?
Yes. Twenty-four zero seven seven passes, seven in favor, zero opposed. I know you're all going to be very disappointed about what I'm about to say, but we are done with public hearings and now we're going on to ordinances. So with that, Madam City Clerk, please proceed.
Twenty-four dash zero five six, second reading. An ordinance authorizing the city manager to execute a certain grant agreement with the Missouri Highways and Transportation Commission for the Truman Connected Phase Two Project, City Project number one one two one zero two, Federal Project Number C M A Q three three seven nine four four one and C R P three three seven nine four four six. Second reading.
Thank you. Any discussion on twenty-four zero five six? Any discussion on twenty-four zero five six? Seeing none, Madam City Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Fears?
Yes.
Councilmember Perkins?
Yes.
Councilmember Stewart?
Yes.
Councilmember McCandless?
Yes.
Councilmember Wiley?
Yes.
Councilmember Vaught?
Yes.
Mayor Rowland?
Yes. Twenty-four zero five six passes, seven in favor, zero opposed. That brings us to twenty-four zero six eight.
Twenty-four dash zero six eight, second reading. An ordinance authorizing acceptance of the twenty twenty-four Midwest High Intensity Drug Trafficking Area, HEIDA, memorandum of understanding, M O U, for the Kansas City slash Overland Park DEA Task Force, Task Force Initiative and related documents with the Kansas Bureau of Investigation for a grant award in the amount of one hundred sixty-three thousand three hundred sixty-two dollars, making the necessary appropriations, authorizing future change orders for additional funding and/or time extensions, and authorizing certain future appropriations. Second reading.
Thank you. And Mr. City Manager, I know you and I talked about this and I just wanted some clarification, so if I could have you kind of give me some background on that or?
Yeah, well, if, Mayor, if it's okay, I will ask the Chief of Police to come forward and, and share just a little bit about the objectives and aims of this grant.
I mean, it sounds like a great program, but I just wanted to get some clarification, so thank you, Chief.
Absolutely. Mr. Mayor, members of the council, um, so you'll actually have two grants. One you'll see tonight, uh, as twenty-four zero six eight, and then item number one under first readings will be also a HEIDA grant next week. So if it's okay with you, I, or next meeting, I should say, so I will, I'll cover both now.
Please.
So, uh, the effort to be brief. So as the name suggests, this is the High Intensity Drug Trafficking Area for the Midwest region. It is a federal program aimed at lowering, just what it says, drug trafficking within the specific areas of responsibility throughout the country. They, they do this through different federal and local partnerships, of which we participate in two versions of that. Just by nature of our association to the I thirty-five corridor going north and south and I seventy that runs predominantly through our city east to west, um, we are well within that high intensity drug trafficking area. So the grant that you are, uh, voting on this evening funds, uh, not fully, but almost fully, two detectives that we have assigned to the Drug Enforcement Administration Task Force out of the Kansas City metro area. They work on long-term drug trafficking and dismantling of drug trafficking organization investigations. You might remember, I've spoken about this before, part of their efforts were most notably or most recently, as these take years to develop, uh, the operation that occurred a year before last in June when we had the tornado out east. That was the largest superseding indictment in the Western District, which took down thirty-nine different indicted defendants. At one time, all served simultaneous search warrants all the way from Texas, all the way up through, uh, northern states with cooperatives of local and state and federal partners. So out of that, that actually dismantled a drug trafficking organization that was tied all the way back to one of the drug traffic, or one, one of the drug cartels in Mexico. So we do have that here in Independence. They served three search warrants in Independence. One was a cash stash house, one was a dope stash house, uh, and one was a newly, um, abandoned active meth lab. So, um, we were able to get all of those, uh, under control and eradicated here from the city and get those defendants into custody. The grant that you will vote on at the next meeting is for the, uh, support investigative support side of that, uh, operation, which is our two crime analysts that are there. They provide operational support as civilians, uh, doing all of the analytical work that needs leading up to these investigations to support those. They have access to federal assets and intelligence sources that we don't have access to. Those are fully funded salary benefits and all of their training for both of those positions are, uh, fully funded through that grant. Most notably recently for them, uh, they supported an operation that I was a part of, uh, last Thursday where, uh, one of our detectives single-handedly took down, uh, a large portion of an outlaw motorcycle gang, uh, expand simultaneous search warrants at six o'clock in the morning, uh, last Thursday that started here in Independence and covered, uh, five different states. We were part of that, uh, we were the lead case agent on that and, um, and that outlaw motorcycle gang is no longer, uh, with any degree of certainty in operation in our area. That arrested nineteen defendants, took, uh, over twenty handguns and twenty-six long guns off the street, three thousand rounds of ammunition, as well as a sizable grow operation of marijuana, other drugs, uh, and gang indicia. And they are all being simultaneously charged as part of a racketeering organization. So, uh, these two programs, needless to say, are vital to the safety of our community.
Well, Chief, I just want, excellent presentation. Thank you for covering both of those. We get questions a lot, as you do too, about fentanyl and that's what we need these programs for in order to give you the resources you can do that. So I just want to say thank you. Excellent presentation, excellent work. So thank you very much.
Thanks, sir.
Anyone else other further discussions on this? Any further discussions on twenty-four zero six eight? Seeing none, Madam City Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Fears?
Yes.
Councilmember Perkins?
Yes.
Councilmember Stewart?
Yes.
Councilmember McCandless?
Yes.
Councilmember Wiley?
Yes.
Councilmember Vaught?
Yes.
Mayor Rowland?
Yes. That brings us to, and that was seven in favor, zero opposed on twenty-four zero six eight. That brings us to twenty-four zero seven eight. Madam City Clerk, please proceed.
Twenty-four dash zero seven eight, second reading. An ordinance amending Article five of Chapter nineteen of the city code enacting a maximum number of refuse collection establishments operating in the city. Second reading.
Thank you. Any further discussion on this item?
Mr. Mayor?
Please proceed.
I just want to let the council know that I've, um, so I spoke about this last time, that this was before us and, and, um, I'm in favor of re- reducing the number of haulers as, um, you all know. But I talked further with, uh, Mr. Stewart, who sponsored this. I spoke with city manager and Mr. Scannell, uh, further about it this last week. I talked with trash haulers. And I'm going to go ahead and, um, vote for this, uh, which will restrict it to where we're currently at. And then, um, uh, have discussed with, uh, well, Mr. Scannell mentioned that we might consider having a, um, special use permit for all trash haulers. And that would be able to be a way that we could, um, further address this situation. So that'll be coming, that has to go through the process, through the Planning Commission and, and forward. So that might be up to us by the end of the year, uh, but just kind of wanted to mention that to the rest of the council on this particular item.
Thank you. Anyone else other further discussion? On twenty-four zero seven eight? Seeing none, Madam City Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Fears?
Yes.
Councilmember Perkins?
Yes.
Councilmember Stewart?
Yes.
Councilmember McCandless?
Yes.
Councilmember Wiley?
Yes.
Councilmember Vaught?
Yes.
Mayor Rowland?
Yes. And twenty-four zero seven eight passes, seven in favor, zero opposed. That brings us to twenty-four zero seven nine. Madam City Clerk, please proceed.
Twenty-four dash zero seven nine, second reading. An ordinance approving a final plat for behavioral health in Independence, Jackson County, Missouri. Second reading.
Thank you. Any further discussion on this item?
Mr. Mayor?
Please proceed.
I'll just take a, a point of personal privilege. My past life is that I am an internist, so I was a practicing physician. And I've also been working on state health policy for many, many years. We have seen an absolute reduction in the number of inpatient beds for psychiatric care to the point where we are just handicapped at the hospital level and at the physician level and being able to get appropriate services. I am so delighted to think that we have the opportunity to improve that situation. So I'm very excited. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else other discussion? Mr. City Manager, if I may please, if, if I'm correct, this is where they're going to have almost a, a hundred bed or two hundred bed facility, is that correct?
About a hundred and twenty beds, sir.
Okay. And that'll be a big impact for our community, so.
Yes, the need is great and the supply is short and this will go a long way towards starting to address that, that shortage that's so great in our need, so great as of a need in our community.
Perfect. Thank you, Mr. City Manager. Anyone else other further discussion? Seeing none, Madam City Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Fears?
Yes.
Councilmember Perkins?
Yes.
Councilmember Stewart?
Yes.
Councilmember McCandless?
Yes.
Councilmember Wiley?
Yes.
Councilmember Vaught?
Yes.
Mayor Rowland?
Yes. Twenty-four zero seven nine passes, seven in favor, zero opposed. This brings us to twenty-four zero eight zero. Madam City Clerk, please proceed.
Twenty-four dash zero eight zero, second reading. An ordinance approving a final plat for Timber Creek Ranch, Third Platte, in Independence, Jackson County, Missouri. Second reading.
Thank you. Any further discussion on this ordinance? Madam City Clerk, please call the roll on twenty-four zero eight zero.
Councilmember Fears?
Yes.
Councilmember Perkins?
Yes.
Councilmember Stewart?
Yes.
Councilmember McCandless?
Yes.
Councilmember Wiley?
Yes.
Councilmember Vaught?
Yes.
Mayor Rowland?
Yes. And twenty-four zero eight zero passes, seven in favor, zero opposed. This brings us to twenty-four zero eight one. Madam City Clerk, please proceed.
Twenty-four dash zero eight one, second reading. An ordinance approving a final plat for Timber Creek Ranch, Fourth Platte, in Independence, Jackson County, Missouri. Second reading.
Thank you. Any discussion on twenty-four zero eight one? Any discussion on twenty-four zero eight one? Seeing none, Madam City Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Fears?
Yes.
Councilmember Perkins?
Yes.
Councilmember Stewart?
Yes.
Councilmember McCandless?
Yes.
Councilmember Wiley?
Yes.
Councilmember Vaught?
Yes.
Mayor Rowland?
Yes. Twenty-four zero eight one passes, seven in favor, zero opposed. That brings us to twenty-four zero eight two. Madam City Clerk, please proceed.
Twenty-four dash zero eight two, second reading. An ordinance vacating an existing unconstructed right-of-way being part of St. Clair Park on and across lots two forty through two forty-eight, a subdivision in Independence, Jackson County, Missouri. Second reading.
Thank you. Any further discussion on twenty-four zero eight two? Seeing none, Madam City Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Fears?
Yes.
Councilmember Perkins?
Yes.
Councilmember Stewart?
Yes.
Councilmember McCandless?
Yes.
Councilmember Wiley?
Yes.
Councilmember Vaught?
Yes.
Mayor Rowland?
Yes. Twenty-four zero eight two passes, seven in favor, zero opposed. This brings us to twenty-four zero eight three. Madam City Clerk, please proceed.
Twenty-four dash zero eight three, second reading. An ordinance authorizing an agreement with the Missouri Highways and Transportation Commission for the Public Transit Operating Assistance Grant in the amount of one hundred forty-one thousand three hundred dollars and sixty-four cents for operating expenses and sixty-four cents for operating expenses associated with transit service for the period July one, twenty twenty-four through June thirty, twenty twenty-five, and making the necessary appropriations. Second reading.
Thank you. Any further discussion on this item? Madam City Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Fears?
Yes.
Councilmember Perkins?
Yes.
Councilmember Stewart?
Yes.
Councilmember McCandless?
Yes.
Councilmember Wiley?
Yes.
Councilmember Vaught?
Yes.
Mayor Rowland?
Yes. Twenty-four zero eight three passes seven in favor, zero opposed. This brings us to twenty-four zero eight four. Madam City Clerk, please proceed.
Twenty-four dash zero eight four, second reading and ordinance authorizing the city manager, manager to accept a grant from Mid-America Regional Council in the amount of eighty-eight thousand, seven dollars for the city's senior adult nutrition site program for fiscal year twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five, and execute the Amendment Community Center Services Agreement, making the necessary appropriations, authorizing future change orders for additional funding and/or time extensions, and authorizing certain future appropriations. Second reading.
Thank you. Any further discussion on twenty-four zero eight four?
Mr. Mayor?
Please proceed.
Um, Mr. City Manager, can you just talk a little bit about the, uh, nutrition site program? How many people that this serves?
Yes, I'd be glad to. So with this, uh, grant, um, city's able to, uh, purchase these nutritional meals for, uh, seniors in our community. Each meal costs, uh, one dollar and eighty-six cents. Uh, so with these funds, we will be able to provide fourteen thousand, three hundred and twenty-three meals to seniors in our community.
I really appreciate that we're able to work with Mid-America Regional Council. I, I think people often don't understand their role as a regional convener that allows us to do things we could never do by ourselves. This is an example of that. Uh, they put together the process for getting meals, the delivery van, et cetera. Um, it's a way that we get funds for the Head Start Program, for roadwork, uh, for solid waste planning for the entire region, uh, stormwater issues. It's just a great organization. Um, I'm very glad the city participates in it. I'm enthusiastically supporting this. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else other further discussion on twenty-four zero eight four? Seeing none. Madam City Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Fears?
Yes.
Councilmember Perkins?
Yes.
Councilmember Stewart?
Yes.
Councilmember McCandless?
Yes.
Councilmember Wiley?
Yes.
Councilmember Vaught?
Yes.
Mayor Rowland?
Yes. Twenty-four zero eight four passes seven in favor, zero opposed. This brings us to first readings. Madam City Clerk, please proceed.
Twenty-four dash zero eight five, first reading and ordinance authorizing the twenty-twenty-four Midwest High-Intensity Drug Trafficking Area, HEIDA, Memorandum of Understanding, MOU, for the Investigative Support Center Initiative and related documents with the Kansas Bureau of Investigation for a grant award in the amount of one hundred fifty-four thousand, four hundred fifty-nine dollars, making the necessary appropriations, authorizing future change orders for additional funding and/or time extensions, and authorizing certain future appropriations. First reading. Twenty-four dash zero eight six, first reading and ordinance authorizing the city manager to execute a certain grant agreement with the Missouri Highways and Transportation Commission for the Fairmount Loop Project, Project Number One-One-Two-Five-Zero-One slash Federal Project Number T A P Three-Three-Seven-Nine-Four-Four-Four. First reading. Twenty-four dash zero eight seven, first reading and ordinance approving a rezoning from District C Two General Commercial and R Six Single Family Residential to R Six Single Family Residential for the property at one-five-five-five-two East U.S. Twenty-four Highway. First reading. Twenty-four dash zero eight eight, first reading and ordinance adding a new Article Five legal description to the Independence City Code, Chapter Ten. First reading.
Thank you. And that will bring us to Councilmember Comments, but, Mr. City Manager, I'm gonna ask, and Councilmembers, just for a personal point of privilege, I meant to give Chief Walker an opportunity to speak earlier. Chief Walker, I want to apologize to you for not doing that, but the floor is yours to talk about fire safety in regards to the instances we've had just recently. So, Chief, please proceed and accept my apologies, please.
Absolutely, sir. Uh, as most of the council and the mayor are aware, tragedy struck our community twice in the last three days, where we've had two separate structure fires with two, uh, civilian fatalities. Now, while it's too early to know the cause of these structure fires, what we do realize is this is a disturbing trend that's happening in our community. Uh, two of the victims in the last year, we've had four fire fatalities in the last year. Uh, I am being told, and I will defer to Chief Stobart on this, that we haven't had that number of fire fatalities in one year in the last twenty years. So, uh, as you know, we are, still have plenty of time left in this year. So, uh, we at your Independence Fire Department are going to take every step we can to try to prevent these, uh, future fatalities and future tragedies. Uh, so with the help of Rebecca and the Communications Division, our fire department is going to create a, uh, public service announcement for schools in the range of twenty to thirty minutes that will distribute to all local schools. Uh, we plan on, uh, going out to the community where the twelve-year-old passed away on Saturday morning and partnering with the Red Cross and doing a smoke detector, uh, canvas to let all the residents there know that, that the Independence Fire Department does provide free smoke detectors and free installation to any person in the community who's in need of one. Uh, we're also going to take every opportunity we can to be able to get out inside the community and put the information out. Uh, but fire safety education, uh, we've noticed in a lot of our calls, uh, just the general practice of fire safety has been on the decline. So it's gonna be our mission to not only respond to every incident, uh, in the city, but also try to prevent as many incidents as we possibly can. Uh, I have the phone number for anybody who's interested, uh, for a free smoke detector that is three-two-five-seven-one-two-three. If you call and leave a message, we'll come back to you. Please, please spread this, uh, number and spread, uh, the message that, uh, fire safety involves everyone, and we need everybody's help to keep our community safe. Do you all have any questions about anything that happened over the weekend?
Any questions for the Chief?
Okay.
And Chief, just to repeat the phone number if they need a, uh, an inspection, and so it's an area code, eight-one-six area code?
Eight-one-six, three-two-five-seven-one-two-three. So please, if anybody's in need of smoke detector, please don't hesitate to call. Uh, as I said before, two of our fatalities for sure had zero smoke detectors in the, in their residence, and that is very, very preventable. So, thank you all very much.
Thank you, Chief. With that being said, we'll come to Councilmember Comments. Councilmember Stewart, you may please proceed.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, so a big, uh, topic of conversation in northeast Independence has been the closure of Bunshu Road, which has caused some headaches for the people that live in that area. I'm sure it's affected emergency vehicles. Um, Fort Osage starts school on Wednesday, so I'm sure it's gonna have a big effect there. So, Mr. City Manager, can you kinda give us a timeline of what's going on there? It's, we've been having problems since April, and it's been, it was closed and then it was open, and now it's closed again. So, can you kinda give us an overview of what's going on with that?
Yes, I would be glad to and, and certainly share your frustration, Councilmember. And I know, as you say, several of the council members have been, um, contacted about that. So there was a stormwater culvert that failed, uh, back in April, uh, that compromised the integrity of the, the ground underneath of the roadway. Um, city staff went out there, did some backfill excavation to build the roadway back up, uh, and reopened that, uh, in early May. Unfortunately, uh, heavy rains that hit the area on, um, July second caused that, uh, backfill to wash out, um, and really then began to point out how significant the, the failure of that culvert was, and was gonna be beyond just kind of a, a, a patch job. So, city staff began to work with a contractor to get, uh, quotes, uh, and estimates and designs for, um, making sure the road could be fixed permanently. Um, this past, uh, Monday, actually, the, the twelfth of August, we finally received our, um, quote that was approved, um, and we are waiting now for the contractor just to complete their work. Um, you know, all of these things are always subject to weather and, and, and some of the other factors, but right now we anticipate that being, uh, completed and reopened to the public by mid-October.
So you think it'll actually be reopened by mid-October, or they're gonna start mid-October?
Um, the, the repair is anticipa- I'm sorry if I wasn't clear on that. The repair is anticipated to begin in mid-October, um, depending on their schedule, and then will take a couple of weeks to complete from then on.
Okay, obviously depending on weather, because...
Weather, yes, absolutely. Right.
Okay, okay. That's all I had on that. Um, can you also give us, um, I've had some questions about our purchase of the G.I. Hot Building off a little blue. Can you give us some, kind of, an update on what's going on with that, and if there's any timeline on us moving departments there?
Certainly. Uh, so, you know, following the council's approval of that transaction back in January, uh, the city closed on the lease purchase agreement with Webster Bank, uh, in mid-January, the, uh, twenty million-dollar lease purchase. Immediately, um, the purchase price, nine-point-one-five million dollars, was wired to, um, G E H A, uh, to complete the acquisition of the building. Uh, since that time, uh, city staff have been working on a, a number of issues like building layout, uh, where different departments are gonna be housed. One of the things we have tried to, uh, be intentional is to, um, align our, uh, personnel in that building, not so much by the department they work on, uh, but by function, so that we can improve some of our customer service opportunities. So for example, um, building permitting, uh, plan review. Uh, right now, those functions are spread out across different facilities and different departments in the city. Uh, by housing all those employees together in the same open workspace at that building, uh, we believe that's going to improve communication among department expedite plan review, um, and the predictability of outcome for folks who are trying to get plans or permits, uh, approved by the city. Um, there's a couple of major, uh, projects, um, the roof replacement that went to bid, and, uh, work is expected to begin, uh, in September. Uh, local vendor Cornell Roofing, uh, was, um, the winner of that bid, so they'll, uh, be starting in September. Um, if we were a little bit patient, um, and waited for them to get all the schools roofed and ready for, uh, schools to open, we got a better price on that. So that's why we waited till September. The redundant fiber, uh, so that the building, uh, has continuous, um, internet service to it, uh, is scheduled to be completed in about three weeks. Uh, and we are performing, are developing a request for a proposal for a general contractor then to come in and perform, um, some of the design enhancements and, and construction. Um, based on our, our desire to, um, certainly get, uh, power and light and municipal services relocated from the utility center as our primary objective, and begin to relocate, uh, police administrative personnel into that facility, uh, we are looking probably the first quarter of twenty twenty-five, so somewhere in the January to March timeframe of starting to move city personnel, uh, into that facility.
Okay, thank you. I appreciate that. Um, also, I just wanna, uh, Chief Walker pointed out a few minutes ago that he, about the smoke detectors and stuff. I wasn't gonna bring it up, but, um, now that he's mentioned it, I just wanna thank the fire department for doing that. Um, I think that's a great way to show community support, and, um, I just, it's a good thing to do. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Fears?
Sure. Um, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, so, um, last Thursday, um, as the liaison from the council to the Public Utility Advisory Board, I attended that meeting. Um, D K M T made, um, their presentations at that meeting, and they'll be coming next, uh, Monday to make presentations to us. Um, I just would encourage the council to come prepared for questions for that, for them at that meeting. Um, there's a lot of material there, um, to try to digest and wade through. It's, it is somewhat technical in nature and complex, but, um, but the more questions we can ask, the better off we're gonna be. So, um, and, uh, so that'll be, that'll be next week. Um, in the last week, we've been doing a number of things leading up to, uh, today, which was the first day of school for Independent School District. Um, and just wanted to mention that, um, you know, that, uh, as far as I know, went well. I, I hadn't heard anything different, anyway. And, um, but, uh, you know, that means we've got kids out in crosswalks, we've got buses going. Let's just be mindful of that as we're, as we're traversing the roadways, and, and that's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. And Councilmember Vaught?
Thank you, Mayor. Um, I was gonna give a shout-out to the Unity Center, but they all left. Um, uh, Councilmember Wiley and I were able to visit, visit them and see the, the work that they're doing. And I'm confident that that organization is gonna grow into something spectacular for our city with the work that they have going on there. Um, and they also have, on August thirtieth and thirty-first, they are offering a block party, um, from ten to two. They'll have food trucks, back-to-school supplies, showers, drive-through, um, or friendly fun area, family fun area, drive-through prayer tent, haircuts for any age. Um, and looks like Casey Wolf is gonna be there for pictures for about thirty minutes. So, um, everything they do is free. They service anyone in need. So, I think that they're a great, a great organization. And I also wanted to express, uh, my gratitude to Chief Walker and the Independence Fire Department, uh, for the hard work and dedication, especially during these challenging last few days. Um, I appreciate the focus that the chief had brought to the fire safety, as it's an issue that we sometimes overlook, but it's vitally important. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember. Councilwoman Wiley?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just wanna, uh, s- send my condolences to the families who've lost people this week. I've been thinking about them a lot. I've, I've also been thinking about the first responders, and I, I can't imagine how difficult what they've been through this week. I wanna thank them for everything they do and that I'm thinking about them when they have, um, rough cases. And I also hope that people take advantage of these free smoke detectors. I really hope that if it's a need you have, that you'll call and, um, it's something that we can provide. And also thanks to the firefighters for that. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember. Councilmember McCandless?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, so the fire department's had some good shout-outs for their good work. I'd like to also, to the police department, would you pass on our gratitude to your detective who spent months and months and months putting together that case, um, and waiting for the final verdicts to come out of that? But congratulations and our appreciation for that. Um, I had the opportunity last week with two of my councilmembers to visit the old Adams Mark Hotel, and just delighted that something is happening to that building, which has just been sitting derelict for the last three years. Um, you know, I, I got some notes from people saying, "Why are you doing that? That's in Kansas City. That's none of your business." I thought it was very gracious that Kansas City invited us to see something that sits right on our border. And we certainly know that things that affect one part of our border affect the City of Independence, whether or not that's our jurisdiction. So, uh, special appreciation to community builders for taking on what I'm sure will be a challenging project. Uh, they're anticipating that their pickleball courts will be open to the public Thanksgiving timeframe, uh, and then they're going to rehab the building, uh, hopefully with hospitality suites available for the twenty-twenty-five chief season, uh, and leading up to World Cup. So, that's a great investment, because having those, uh, rooms populated means people will come to Independence to shop and go to restaurants. So it's, it's good for us, too. Um, I've also just been encouraged, uh, back to my theme of we're better together and neighborhoods take a lot of effort. There have been more small developers and investors who live here and who are based here to take some of these houses and rehab them and sell them, take those properties that are absent a house and put new homes on those. Uh, we have seen a lot of out-of-torn, out-of-town landlords, uh, and I appreciate any neighborhood who's trying to figure out how to address houses that need a lot of love. Certainly, the Anklewood District is an area that needs a lot of love, uh, and I appreciate communities that are really trying to think about creative ways to do that rehab and revitalization of neighborhoods. Um, and then also this weekend, I was happy to join the Community Services League for their backpack giveaway. We had three hundred volunteers who came and set up and took down and were personal shoppers for two thousand kids who came through the doors to get some of their school supplies and a new pair of shoes to be able to go back to school. So hats off to CSL for setting that up. And then, Mr. City Manager, probably in your comments, you're gonna address these, but I would love for you to talk a little bit about Jackson County taxes. Um, I think people think that the city received some gigantic windfall when their property taxes went up, and the reality is we actually have to charge them less on their taxes so that we don't make any more money. Uh, and there's just a lot of uncertainty, so if you'll talk to that, and then I won't steal your thunder, um, for the really exciting financial milestone I hope you're gonna talk about. And, Mr. Mayor, are you gonna talk about American Legion Post? Okay, fantastic. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Perkins?
Thank you, Mayor. Um, kinda dovetail a little bit with Councilwoman McCandless. With the World Cup, FIFA, this Friday, I will be attending the World Cup briefing for local officials. Key areas of conversation's gonna be transportation for key events, venues, regional coordination for safety and security, information pertinent to local, um, uh, towns for tourisms and events. So I will be attending that, and I'll give a report, uh, once that, that is done, and we come back around. I think, um, also, number two, tonight was, was a big night. I think needs a little extra weight added to it. Councilwoman Vaught? was, was a big night. I think needs a little extra weight added to it. Councilwoman Vought did mention about the Unity Center, which we did pass their, their rezoning request. But also with that, we had U H S with the Behavioral Health, I mean, approving this as well, has shown that we do take a, a very big stance, and we understand the need that's in our community, and we're, we're moving in those directions to, to help where we can, to plug in where the need is at. And then thirdly, and final, the General Obligation Bond Meeting was last Wednesday. Excited to see that come together and looking forward to, to what that work product will produce. So, a lot of good big things happening in the city. So, that's all tonight, Mayor.
Perfect. Thank you, councilmember. And I just have a couple of things to mention. One is, Councilwoman McCandless and myself went to the eighteenth Annual Legacy Run. You might say, why would we do that? But that was on Sunday morning, and what the Legacy Run is, it was from the American Legion, Post Twenty-One, right there on Forty Highway. But that was the start of an eleven-hundred-mile motorcycle ride to assist military and veteran children's needs, as well as providing valuable training and critical, and, or, and critical training to the American Legion's component. The Legacy Run left Sunday morning at seven-thirty. So, we were up at the crack of dawn. We got to watch the sun rise in Independence, which was a beautiful morning, so it was a great sunrise. And, so they left Independence. They're going to go through Arkansas. They are then going to go to Mississippi and end up in Louisiana where their National Twenty, Twenty Twenty Four American Legion National Convention is. And they also told me that we will be back. This is important, because they don't always start from, they start from various American Legions all over the country. So, this was one of the times that we have, were on the rotation. But they will have the National Twenty Twenty Seven American Legion National Convention here in Kansas City. So, that's an important key, and it was great to see you at sunrise. Also, the Susan Paxton Block Award nomination deadline has been extended till Wednesday, August twenty-first. So, if you want to get the nomination forms in there, the nomination forms are on the city website at indep, indep, or independencemo.gov. That's independencemo.gov. So, those are the two things I have. Mr. City Manager, any closing thoughts?
I do have a couple of, of items, pardon me, for the council this evening. One thing I wanted to mention, I know in Citizen Commons tonight, a few folks spoke to us about rental licensing, making sure business licenses are properly acquired by landlords wanting to operate in our city. Last year, the city did fund a fifty thousand dollar contract to have somebody who was exclusively focused on that service. As the council will recall, last year was another year of belt tightening with the city's budget, particularly in an inflationary economy, required a lot of tough decisions, and that was one of the programs that we opted not to fund this year. What I don't want to leave people with is the sense that that's not being minded. The city does have three full-time business license inspectors who are working to make sure landlords are properly licensed and operating in accordance with the rental ready ordinance in the city. The council has also approved the funding for, and we have implemented and are utilizing a software system known as Rentalscape, which is allowing our staff to scour records and identify individuals who also may need to get into compliance. So, while we don't have that singular contract position any longer, we do still have the three full-time employees. We have the software system. And if you're interested, I would encourage you to go look at a recent audit by the management analysts that reviewed this program and highlighted a lot of the success that this program is having. I did want to mention, as, as Councilmember McCandless alluded to, in two thousand and seventeen, the city council adopted a resolution setting some best practices for financial management. One of those was setting a reserve balance policy for all of our different funds in the city. One of those was for the general fund, where we mandated that the city would have a sixteen percent reserve in its general fund. That was up from the previous policy, which was only five percent. And so, to put that in context, over the last decade, we have gone from about two-point-three million dollars in our general fund reserve to this past June thirtieth, the ending of the fiscal year, our unaudited financial numbers, so that we'll finish with about fourteen-point-seven million dollars. So, we are now, again, unaudited numbers, but finishing with a seventeen-point-four percent reserve balance, first time since the council adopted that palace, policy back in twenty-seventeen, that the city's now meeting its reserve policy. That is a strong indication to the credit rating agencies. When we begin to borrow funds for different infrastructure projects in the city, we will be able to borrow at a lower interest rate and ensure we're putting more money into our projects instead of into interest payments. We also have some cushion for rainy day emergencies, if there were a natural disaster or other calamity to befall the city. This is why we have a reserve policy. So, our work will still be to maintain that, but in the face of a global pandemic, historic inflation, we have made it, and I think that's something we should celebrate. Councilmember McCandless did mention our assessed valuation and levy-setting process. So, next meeting on the third of September, you will have first reading of the ordinance to set the levy for the coming year. Our budget manager, Melissa Sill, is going to present some information to you on that. But one thing I will say quickly, even with assessed valuations increasing, under state law, under the Hancock Amendment, as a city, we are prohibited in realizing an increase except for whatever the Consumer Price Index was in that particular year. So, the city has to adjust its levy in order to ensure that we collect no more than whatever the percent increase is in Consumer Price Index. So, just one of the things I want to make sure taxpayers of the city understand is, even if your assessed valuation goes up, your levy rate is rolled back to accommodate that increase in evaluation. Last thing that I would like to add is, we talked about the Geo Bond Committee. There is a lot of work going on behind the scenes to bring information forward this fall to help inform that conversation. Staff is working on, and I know council has participated in, a space and design needs assessment for the Justice Center. There's a feasibility study going on for a recreation center, looking at updating costs for sidewalk projects, street maintenance projects. While we continue to do work on our historic sites with the resources we have, updating our figures there. So, there's a lot of information being worked on by city staff behind the scenes that will find its way into these chambers for public discussion this fall, and we look forward to that. Mr. Mayor, thank you for the time and letting me share those updates.
Thank you. With that, unless there's anyone else needs to have anything else to say, we will call this meeting adjourned. Thank you.